I'm going to call this Special Board of Alderman meeting to order. We're here on May 16th at Nashua High School North for a public hearing on the city budget.
Here's Dave.
Tonight, the prayer will be offered by City Clerk Trish Piatzou and Alderman Tenza will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have a high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Lethal God with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens, so help us, God. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Gidge, Alderman Harriet Gathright, Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Clea, Alderman Laws, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Jettie, Alderwoman Malyzygola, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Willshire. Here. We have ten members present. Thank you. And with the quorum, I am going to turn the meeting over to the Budget Chair, Alderman Dowd.
Good evening. Tonight, we will have the public hearing on the 2020 budget. And before we get started, the process is going to be, we're going to go through each division and each department. When I call that department, you can come up to the microphone here in the front and make a brief, brief statement. I prefer no speeches. And then we will, you can ask your questions. You can ask two questions, and then I'd ask you to wait till everybody else has had a chance. If you have additional questions, you can come back. Okay. And before we start, I have a memorandum from the Scott Leclair, or the Chief Chair of the Planning Board, and all the board members, to myself as Chair of the Budget and the members of the Budget Committee. And the subject is "Request to Fund Master Plan Update in Proposed FY 2020 City Budget." At its work session meeting on May 9th, the Planning Board voted unanimously to send a favorable recommendation to the Budget Committee to fund the master plan. It has been nearly twenty years since the current adopted master plan commenced. State law recommends master plans be updated every ten years. The Planning Board also rated the master plan an update as an A2 on projects in the capital improvement program. The Planning Board cannot attend the Budget Committee May 16th, public hearing on the proposed FY 20 budget since it conflicts with their regular meeting. Please enter this memorandum and consider our above favorable recommendation at the public hearing. Thank you. I need a motion to take the budget off the table. Alderman O'Brien. Okay, the motion on the floor is to take the budget off the table so we can discuss it. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, also, if a question comes up and it can't be answered from either the Mayor or Chief Financial Officer, we have people from every division here to answer the question. So the first area to be discussed is general government.
Oh, well, Mr. Chair, I do have this presentation here, which I was, an overview of the budget, which I was going to do.
Okay, sure, no problem.
Well, welcome, everybody, to Nashua North here. So our fiscal 2020 public hearing on the proposed budget. So here is the, the strategies, some of the things we wanted to accomplish in the FY 2020 budget are listed here. But first, a lot of paving. Thirty miles of paving will be done this year, along with thirty-one miles of crack sealing, which is a very, crack sealing being a very cost-effective way to maintain the condition of a street that is in relatively good shape but could deteriorate for a period of three, four, five, six years at a very limited cost. So this has been implemented in a bit by Public Works in prior years, but this year that program is being expanded considerably. This thirty-one miles of streets will cost about $143,000, I think the number is, while the thirty miles of paving will be more like eleven million. So the crack sealing is a very cost-effective way to maintain, at least maintain, condition. Another strategy we employed this year is to limit the proposed tax increase to the lowest we could possibly keep it. Given some of the challenges that you will see on another slide, that increase, I'm saying, should be no more than three percent. Another strategy, we want to maintain or improve the quality of services that we offer. And while I'm on this bullet, I would like to thank all of the 2,800 city employees in our schools, in our Public Works, our wastewater treatment plant at City Hall, who work very, very hard every day to provide services to the city, to our city's residents. And I wanted to take this opportunity to thank each one of them for everything you do for our citizens every day because we do provide a very cost-effective set of services for our citizens. Next, we, a new thing is that we would, that the budget funds an energy manager that will help us reduce energy costs and cut greenhouse, the emission of greenhouse gases. This is, as I mentioned, the first time, and we think that this position over, over time can more than pay for itself. I've asked the Board of Alderman to, we wanted to include this in the budget, but somehow it was left out, but we've asked the Board of Alderman to amend the budget to include half the cost of a grant writer, the other half being in the school department. And here, again, we think that by working together with the schools, with a professional grant writer, we can bring in far more money than it costs to pay the grant writer. These would be grants that might be directed to education, but also other areas of city services, other areas of the city, and we think this is a very cost-effective way to bring more revenue to Nashua. Another effect of the budget would be to increase the ELL teachers in the school district by four. What we've done is we've replaced, we have placed $200,000 in the contingency account for that purpose, over and above the recommended school board, school district, school board budget. The point there is that when the school department asks for the money, or if the Board of Alderman wishes to make a change to the budget to make an immediate transfer, that that would be provided to the school department for the purposes of hiring ELL teachers. Now, ELL, for those, if there's anyone listening that doesn't know what that refers to, it's English language learner teachers. We have a very increasing number, a big increase in the number of students who come to our schools who do not speak English as a primary language, and we have many languages spoken in, by the families whose kids come to, to school in Nashua, from all the continents of the United, of the world. So that, we think, will at least help to improve English learning by our students. Next slide. We are, we want to start Imagine Nashua 2040, which is the first citywide master plan that has been done in twenty years. The budget funds the first half of that. This is, would be a two-year project, so we'd need to include money next year as well. The Planning, the Planning and Economic Development Committee will obviously, and the Planning Board will, of course, be very involved. We may seek to get citizens involved as well, but the idea is to visualize what our, our community, to imagine what our community can be in the next twenty years, and incorporate those ideas into the city master plan, which, as, being twenty years old, is out of date. Another issue that we address here through an increase in revenue from the, from a contribution from our ambulance provider, is to increase the fire dispatchers. Right now, there are only two fire dispatchers on duty at any one time. The number, and that is, that number has been constant for long, for decades. The number of calls that the fire department receives on a daily basis, or on an annual basis, excuse me, has increased from several thousand way back when this number of dispatchers was first established, to over 11,000 calls in the course of a year. And, and it may go higher than that. So obviously, they're very busy, and we rely very greatly on our fire dispatch. They respond to many, many calls, not only fires, but all medical emergencies, opioid overdoses, and everything else that goes on in the city. So this will take some pressure off and help us to deliver a quality response, emergency response with respect to these 11,000, or 12,000, or more thousand calls a year. Here's some of the, here's some of the, an overview of some of the things in the budget. We, the budget as proposed is a total of the operating budget of $270,300,000. That's a $4.2 million increase in the budget. Without the health care issue, which I will discuss in a minute, the rest of the budget is only up 1.6%, but we have a $3.3 million increase in health care costs. As you know, we are self-insured here, which is, which saves the city a lot of money, much, much cheaper than actually buying insurance, but health care costs are going up, and, and we're seeing an 11% increase this year, which will increase that area of the budget by $3 million. That is the reason we are trying to be as tight as possible with respect to everything else, to meet that cost as well as maintain, and in some cases, improve the quality of services. So we, we're seeing a $7.5 million increase in the budget, which is 2.86%. And the $4.2 million increase I mentioned is the increase but for health care, on the base of about 260-some million dollars. In terms of revenue, we are continuing to budget revenue conservatively. David Fredette, who is the city treasurer, of course, and is responsible for automobile registrations and some other revenues, is very instrumental in helping us project revenues, along with the CFO, John Griffin. We believe that the revenue from our vehicle registrations will be stable, or maybe up slightly from last year, but it is a pretty healthy source of revenue. We are in a continuing low interest rate environment. That means that the income coming in from the city's investments is quite low. There was a time when interest rates were higher, and that revenue item was actually quite significant, because if we have tens of millions of dollars in the bank and we're getting actual interest on that, that can result in quite a bit of revenue, but in the current environment, it is very limited. We also face at least the potential reduction in state aid funds, specifically the stabilization grant in the field of education. Now, we are hopeful that in the legislature, we will see a change in that trend. The House budget the past would make a considerable improvement, help the city very much, and we have a number of members of our Board of Alderman who serve on the legislative, in that legislative delegation, so we really appreciate their help there. We do need to try to get the House budget now through the Senate, but if it does pass in the form, and it's not vetoed, but gets very involved, but if it were to pass in the form passed by the House, we would definitely see increases in revenue, particularly in education, which we very need, which we very much need. Now, in terms of the overall challenges, the, I mentioned already, the cost of providing health care to employees is increasing by 11%. $3.3 million of the operating budget resulting, which will really drive the, the potential tax increase to at or near 3%. If it weren't for this, this particular item, the increase would, significant, would be closer to one or one and a half percent in the tax rate. We, therefore, because of that, that, that significant cost, asked the police, school, DPW, and fire departments to limit their increase to 2.25%, and all other divisions 1.75%. There have been a few variations from that, but we've tried to hold increases to that amount to help keep the tax rate at a reasonable level, given the other budget challenge that I already mentioned. So looking forward in terms of just the kind of things we'll be working on, I know the Board of Alderman is very on board with all, with all of this. We want to continue to make infrastructure, street and sidewalk improvements, not only this year, but in succeeding years. One project that we have is we got a grant to do Lock and Whitney Street sidewalks, which was about, which will be about a million dollars. That is in design, one of the infrastructure improvements that we want to make in the near future. We will be implementing our riverfront master plan to bring forth the riverwalks, lighting along the riverwalks, cantilevered walkways near the Main Street Bridge. We all believe that the riverfront is a major asset, a very beautiful asset for the city, and that if we make the right investments, we can really bring that, bring the river more to life and introduce more of our residents to that area of the city, bring people downtown, and just increase the quality of life for everyone. We are working on the rail yard district, which I mentioned in the State of the City address, near Corvo Ruthier and at Henry Hanger, to see additional downtown housing located in, on those parcels, and in that area of the city where the rail yard used to be. We are looking to try to add additional downtown housing in addition to the rail yard district, which, and we can, as time goes on, I think we will see additional details concerning that. Bringing housing downtown, of course, adds to the tax base, increases residents downtown, increases customers for our businesses, strengthens the downtown business community, and just adds a dimension to the community which will attract various millennial and empty nester residents to downtown. I just, in the last few weeks, have met a group of people who have located into the clock, into the Loft 34 middle to housing conversion. It's definitely bringing people in that were not downtown before, and I think all of the housing projects that we're working on will do that. We know that affordable housing is certainly an issue, and the project on Marshall and East Hollis Street, we hope will help to address that. That's 150 units of so-called workforce housing, or targeted to families who are working and make up to 50-some thousand dollars a year, and offer rents that are less than market. We, in conjunction with the Joint Special School Building Committee and our school board, will be looking to upgrade our middle schools in coming years, including either renovating or replacing the Elm Street Middle School, and upgrading the facilities at other schools, the other middle schools at the same time. The Dr. Mosley is very, I know, committed, and the school board very committed to this middle school project. Alderman Dowd is Chair of the, the Joint Special, and will be pushing this project forward over the next few years. Now, kind of a fun thing, some of the accolades that Nashua has gotten in recent, in the last couple of years, you can see, see them here. This is why, this is due to the efforts of all of our residents, our Board of Alderman, our city government, and our business community, our nonprofits. Everybody's working together to make Nashua the best place we possibly can, but it's been named one of the safest places to retire in the country. This is just in 2018. Nashua is named one of the best-run cities, I think ninth in the country. Nashua is named the best place for millennials to live in Hillsborough County. Nashua is named the most diverse community in New Hampshire. Nashua, and the most inclusive, I might add. Nashua has come, has some of the lowest crime for a mid-sized city. In 2017, those were all in 2018, in 2017, Nashua and Manchester were named one of the happiest places in the country. Everybody's smiling, so I know that's true. 2017, one of the safest cities in the country, and in 2017, one of the best cities to live in America, that was again Money Magazine. So we're very proud of our community, but as a city government and as a partner with all of our residents, we try to do our part to provide quality services and make the city the best place to live as we possibly can. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's an overview of the, what I see in the budget, and therefore, we're now prepared to proceed with any questions or comments that residents may have.
Thank you. So once again, I'm going to be going through each division and each department. As I call that department, if there are any comments that you'd like to make, brief comments about the, the department, or any questions that you might have, please come up to the microphone, and if the questions can't be answered by the Mayor or the Chief Financial Officer, we have people from every one of the departments here. So with that, the first area is general government, and the first one is the Mayor's Office. Appropriations are on page 62 of the budget books. By the way, there's extra copies of the budget books for anybody that would like one, right up front. Is there anyone that has questions on the Mayor's Office budget? Seeing none? Move on to the Board of Alderman. The appropriations are on page 69. Are there any questions on the Aldomatic budget? Seeing none? We'll move on to the Legal Department. Appropriations are on page 71. Are there any questions about the Legal Department? None? Are there any questions about Administrative Services? The appropriations are on page 75. Seeing none? Next is the City Clerk's office. The revenue is on page 32, which is the yellow section of your budget books, and the appropriations are on page 77. Are there any questions concerning the Clerk's Office budget? Seeing none? Next is Department 109 Civic and Community Activities, and appropriations are on page 82. No comments? Next is the Arlington Street Community Center. Appropriations are on page 86. Seeing none? Next is Human Resources. Appropriations are on page 87. None? Next is Benefits. The appropriations are on page 90. Are there any questions or comments on Benefits? Seeing none? Citywide Pensions. The appropriations are on page 93. Are there any questions or concerns? Seeing none? Other General Government. That is Revenue on page 33. Are there any questions? Seeing none? The next department is Economic Development, and the department, or the divisions Economic Development, the Department's 131 Hunt Building, and the appropriations are on page 96. Are there any questions or concerns on Hunt Building? Seeing none? Next is Department 166 Parking Operations, which, revenue's on page 34. Appropriations are on page 97. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none? Economic Development, Department 183. Appropriations are on page 99. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none? Next is the Financial Services Division. The first apartment is 126 Financial Services. The revenue's on page 35. The appropriations are on page 113. Any questions or concern? Seeing none? Risk Management, Department 128. Appropriations are on page 115. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none? Next is Department 129 City Buildings. Appropriations are on page 118. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none? Next is Purchasing, Department 130. Revenue is on page 37. Appropriations are on page 120. Seeing no one coming forward? Next is Department 132 Assessing. Revenue is on page 38. Appropriations are on page 122. Any questions or concern on Assessing? Seeing none? Next is Department 134 GIS. The revenue is on page 39. Appropriations are on page 124. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none? The next division is Information Technology. The department is 120 Telecommunications, and the appropriations are on page 135. Any questions or concerns on telecommunications? Seeing none? Next is Information Technology, Department 122, and the appropriations are on page 136. The next division is Police, and Department 150 Police Department. Revenues are on page 40. Appropriations are on page 144. Are there any questions on the Police Department budget? Seeing none? The next division is Fire, Department 152 Fire Department. Revenue on page 41, and appropriations on page 151. Any questions or concerns on the Department, Fire Department's budget? Seeing none? Next division is Emergency Preparedness, Department 156 Energy Management. Appropriations are on page 165. Next is Department 157 Citywide Communications. Appropriations are on page 167. Are there any questions or concerns? Next division is Other Public Safety, Department 159 Hydrant and Fire Protection. Appropriations are on page 170. Next is Department 162 Street Lighting. Appropriations are on page 171. Any questions or concern on street lighting? Next division is Public Health and Community Services. Department 171 is the first, Community Services. Appropriations are on page 181. Any questions or concerns? Next is Department 172 Community Health. Revenue on page 42. Appropriations on page 183. Any questions or concern? Next is Department 173 Environmental Health, and the revenue is on page 43. Appropriations on page 185. Any questions or concern? None? Next is Department 174 Welfare Administration. Revenue on page 44, and appropriations on page 187. Any questions or concerns on that budget? None? Next is Department 175 Welfare Assistant. The appropriations are on page The appropriations are on page 189. Any questions or concerns? Next division is Public Works and Engineering. First is Department 160 Public Works and Engineering. The revenue was on page 45. The appropriations are on page 199. Any questions or concerns on Public Works and Engineering? Seeing none. Next is Department 161 Street Department. Revenues are on page 46. Appropriations are on page 201. Any questions or concerns? None. Next is Department 177 Parks and Recreation. Revenue is on page 47. Appropriations are on page 204. Any questions or concern? None. The next division is Public Services. First apartment's 140 Pinewood Cemetery. Appropriations are on page 211. Any questions or concern? Seeing none. Next is Department 142 Woodlawn Cemetery. Revenue is on page 48. Appropriations are on page 212. Any questions or concerns on that budget? None. Edgewood and Suburban Cemeteries, Department 144. Revenue is on page 49. Appropriations are on page 214. No questions or concerns? Next division is Public Library, Department 179 Public Library. Revenue is on page 50. Appropriations on page 221. Any questions or concerns on the public library? None. Next is Community Development, Department 153 Building Inspection. Revenue on page 51. Appropriations on page 233. Any questions or comments on that budget? Seeing none. Department 155 Code Enforcement. Appropriations are on page 235. Any questions or concern? None. Department 170 Hydroelectric Operations. Revenue is on page 52. Appropriations on page 237. Any questions or concern? Department 181 Community Development. Appropriations are on page 238. Any questions? Next is Department 182 Planning and Zoning. Appropriations are on page 53. Appropriations are, revenue's on page 53. Appropriations on page 240. Any questions or concerns? Next department is 184 Urban Programs. The appropriations are on page 242. Any questions or concern? Department 186 Transportation. Appropriations are on page 245. Any questions or concerns on transportation? Seeing none. Next division is Education, Department 191 School Department. Revenues are on page 54. Appropriations on page 261. Any questions or concern on education? Seeing none. The next is Debt Service, Contingency and Interfund Transfers. Department 193 Debt Service. Appropriations are on page 266. Any questions or concern? Seeing none. Department 194 Contingency. Appropriations are on page 271. Any questions or concern? Seeing none. Department 198 Interfund Transfers. Appropriations are on page 272. Any questions or concern? Okay, the next, the departments are all covered. If anybody has any questions on, on the next topics that I bring up, please come up and give us any questions or concern you have. Capital Improvements. See, that's on page 274. There are none. Enterprise Funds, which are the green section of the uh budget book. First is Solid Waste Disposal System Fund. Revenue's on 278. Appropriations on page 280. Seeing none. Next is Wastewater User Fund. Revenue's on 289. Appropriations on 291. Any questions or concern? None. Special Revenue Funds. There are numerous. I'll read them off. If you have any questions or concern on any of the special revenue funds, please come up front. Public Health Client Fees Fund. Parks and Recreation Programs Fund. Holman Stadium Events Fund. EEG Access Channel Fund. Hunt Building and Facility Rental Fund. Fire Training Facility Rental Fund. Special Road and Highway Fund. Henochak Acquisition Bond Fund. 201 Main Street Rental Fund. Next, the School Special Revenue Funds. Again, if you have any concerns on any of them, please come forward. Food Services. Summer Feeding Program. Driver's Education. Summer School. Adult Continuing Education. Athletic Revenue Fund. School Facilities Rental. After-School Program. North Student Shop. South Student Shop. Culinary Arts. Daycare. Special Education Local Tuition. School CT Tuition Fund. There's also supplemental information in blue section of the budget book. Again, if there are any concerns on anything I read, please come up and ask questions or concerns. Appropriated Expendable Trust and Reserve Funds. Capital Equipment Reserve Fund, the SERF. Land Replacements. Nashua Airport Authority. General Government. Economic Development. Financial Services. Police. Fire. Public Health and Community Services. Public Works. Public Services. Public Library. Community Development. School Department. Is there anyone that has any questions or concerns about any part of the budget? Seeing none. Alderman O'Brien need a motion. Motion to adjourn. We're adjourned at 7:39.